Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting in the Cholo City Council to order by real call, see that all council members are present. I'd like to welcome those of you who are with us here tonight in person, as well as those who may be watching us on TV, Channel 56, or some other means of telelogical devices. This evening, we'd like to begin, invite those who'd like to join with us in prayer. I will ask Pastor Gary Wingate of the Grace Church, if he'd lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll have the Eastern Arizona Young Marines, please stand.
Lord, let me introduce myself. I'm Pastor Gary Wingate from Grace Church. Mike Alsop and his family attend our church. And he told me that I could have like 15 minutes to...
He's not your boss.
Well, that's not true. I should just pray?
That would be good.
Okay, well, that's great. The word that the Lord put on my heart for the council members, for all of us, for that matter, is out of Proverbs where Solomon said, "The mind of man plans his way." So in this instance, the minds of men and women make their own plans. But then he says, "But the Lord directs their steps." And I would think that that would be a word of encouragement, but also a challenging word. You know, each council member, you know why you're doing what you're doing, and we're grateful for your service. But God also knows why you're here and what your motive is for doing what you're doing. And I'm going to encourage, and I'm not saying this hasn't happened up until now, it probably has, but I'm going to encourage you to receive this word. It is a word from the Lord, that no matter where you've been or what your motives have been, from this night forward, make your plans, plan together, because that's probably a gift that you've all been given. But then take those plans, take those plans to the Lord, and allow Him to direct your steps as a city council representing the White Mountains, representing the city of Cholo. So, Lord, we do ask, we ask, my prayer is that each council person would have a greater dependency upon you, that they would open their hearts to you, that they would realize that their wisdom, their intellects are not enough. Bring your wisdom, bring your intellect, bring your opinion, but bring it all together before the Lord and allow Him to direct your steps. We need that not only in Cholo, but we need that for our nation. So we ask, Lord, your continued work, your continued blessings in Cholo, working through, in and through these council members. And we thank you for your faithfulness, and I thank you for each member here tonight for their service. We appreciate all that they've done, all that they're doing, and all that they will do. We pray and ask your blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Young Marines?
Ladies and gentlemen, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you indeed.
Thank you, Pastor Wingate, and Eastern Arizona Young Marines. Appreciate you being here tonight. We have just a change here. We're going to go from Call to the Public to the Consent Calendar, and then we will come back to Special Events, if that's okay. At this time, I'll open Call to the Public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city of Cholo may do so at this time. Seeing that nobody's come forward, I'll close Call to the Public and come back to the Consent Calendar. First item we have is a proclamation of Red Ribbon Week in the city of Cholo, declaring October 23rd through the 31st of... Also, we have a Community Fast of Compassion for Those in Need for the week of November 8th through the 14th proclamation. And then a proclamation for Arizona Cities and Towns proclaiming October 18th through the 24th. We have a consideration of the acceptance of Curiosity Grants. And then we also have, love it when technology works, consideration of reassignment of non-commercial ground lease at Cholo Airport, and then a consideration of the approval of the budget transfers to complete implementing agreement for gang and immigration intelligence team enforcement, and then a consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council on October 6th. Councilwoman Kukavas?
I move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
The motion is seconded by Councilmember Alsop. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor, any opposed? See that that passed seven to zero. At this time, we'll read the, in fact, I'd like to have the young Marines, if they'd come forward, and their advisor, if they'd come up as we read this proclamation for them tonight. Just want to tell you guys, you look sharp, and we appreciate what you do and what you represent and what you stand for. Appreciate you being here tonight. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas government and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Quique Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent, who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas October 23rd to the 31st, 2015, has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americas to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, I, Darryl Seymour, Mayor, on behalf of the Cholo City Council, do hereby proclaim October 23rd to the 31st, 2015 as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Cholo, and urge all citizens to join in this special observance, dated this 20th day of October. This time, I'd like you to come forth and receive this proclamation. I want to give you guys a great hand. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could ask a question on the red ribbon, how are they funded? Do you guys need help with that, or what is the situation?
Basically, we take whatever donations we can to buy the red ribbons. We're going to be doing trunk-or-treat in all the communities, Snowflake, Taylor, Cholo, Pine Top Lakeside. Basically, that's come out of our unit funds. So whatever donations people want to make to that, we will be happy to accept. The more we can get this out, the better it'll be for the community.
Do they go to the schools too, or do schools participate?
We do. So we pass out pamphlets, we pass out all kinds of different things. Like for the elementary school, we have pencils and slap bracelets, the silicone bracelets that the kids wear. But all this costs, you know? So it makes it a little difficult, so we do what we can. But like I said, this year, we're doing trunk-or-treat. We're expecting to pass out about 6,500 red ribbons and pamphlets and a piece of candy to go with it for Halloween, so.
That's great. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Our next proclamation is a proclamation for the Community Fast of Compassion. If we could have those that are here tonight associated with that. President Steve Williams, Pastor Steve Heckethorne, and Pastor Tom Brown. Glad to have you here. Whereas community service has always been a part of Americas and will, as Cholo's heritage, and whereas the number of those in need in our area seem to be an always-growing number, and people of our community have always shown a sincere desire to help those in need, especially during the holiday season. And whereas a number of faith-based and other organizations approached the city of Cholo in 2013 with the plan to help those in need in our community. And whereas the city of Cholo embraced this concept, out of which was born the Community Fast of Compassion for Those in Need. And whereas the city of Cholo and its citizens have discovered that the Community Fast is a very worthwhile cause that has made a huge difference in the lives of many in our community. Now therefore, I, Darryl Seymour, Mayor, on behalf of the Cholo City Council, do hereby proclaim November 8th to the 14th, 2015, as Community Fast for Compassion for Those in Need Week, and urge all citizens of Cholo to come together in the Third Annual Community Fast of Compassion for Those in Need. Join us in setting aside one day during this week to fast and pray for guidance, grace, and protection for our great city and nation. As we address the challenges of our time and the concerns of those in need, donate the cost of one or two meals, or more if you can, from this fast to this worthy cause. With donations accepted at Cholo City Hall, National Bank of Arizona, Chase Bank, Washington Federal, and Arizona Central Credit Union. And join us in a community celebration on November 22nd, 2015, at 6:00 PM at the Cholo School District Auditorium, dated this 20th day of October, 2015. If I could just get you guys to make a little comment here, and then I'll present this with you.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us. This is the third year we've been here, the third proclamation that the council has declared. We appreciate your support, Mayor. For those that may be watching on television that are not familiar with this, the concept is you take one day during that week of the fast and fast for one or two meals, take the money you would've spent or more, donate it to a common fund. 100% of the monies that are donated go to help local families in need. We work through organizations that are already in place to identify people in need over the holidays. In the last two years that we've done this, more than $20,000 has been raised. It has gone to help children and families pay electricity, pay food, get some basic wants over the holidays. It's been a neat thing. The celebration that we did last year, there was about 500 people in attendance, and they heard stories of how those monies were used the year previous. There were several churches that participated with musical numbers, and we're just looking to grow on it every year. And so we appreciate your support. This has been a tremendous blessing to the people that have participated, and we hope will continue to be a great blessing for years to come. So thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Go ahead.
Mayor, I'd just like to, first of all, thank you and this council for having us here. And I think the story that represents what this is about was given by Sandy Brimhall. She's the principal of the Whipple Elementary School, I believe. And when she was explaining what the money had done, she was talking about children that came that we thought just hadn't worn out coats. And the reality is, they came to school with no coats. No coat. And this is one of the things that we realized, this fast can reach and touch, and there's nothing really in the community that can reach and understand the needs of children better than the school districts and the school system. And what we realized, we were helping put coats on children that didn't have coats, were coming to school without any coat. And so that story touched a lot of hearts and lives in relation to what this is. Yes, churches are involved, but this is a community event. And what better than churches to come together to help organize a community event? I talk with people in the community that don't even go to church, but participate in this because they want to be part of the community. So I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for your support, the support of the City Council here in Cholo, for something that is unique. I don't know if this is going on really in any other city I know of. And so just thank you for your time and your support, Mayor, and City Council, and the opportunity to come and present this and have something in Cholo that is unique to the Cholo community, and I think is really a blessing to all that live here. So thank you.
Pastor Brown?
Just thank you very much for your support and your help with this effort. And to reiterate what my friends have said already, this is a community event. People from all levels and all directions are participating in it. And in previous years, the good that's been done with the resources that have been raised, we don't have time to tell you all of that. Pastor Steve gave one example. So we're grateful, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi there.
Thank you. Good to see you. Our next proclamation is of Arizona Cities and Towns. Whereas the citizens of city of Cholo rely on local government to experience a high quality of life in our community. And whereas local governments in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver city services such as police, fire, emergency, medical service to create safe communities. And whereas the methods of funding these vital city services are not always clearly understood by citizens. And where it is one of the responsibilities of city officials to ensure that legislators, media, and citizens understand their local government through open and frequent communication using various avenues and means. Whereas it is important to work to encourage this connection and inform citizens of the importance of state shared revenues to preserve the excellent delivery of service that our citizens have come to expect in our city. And whereas through education and awareness, citizens, community leaders, and city staff can work together to ensure that services provided by the city of Cholo can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life of our community. Now therefore, I, Darryl Seymour, on behalf of the Cholo City Council, do hereby proclaim October 18th through the October 24th as Arizona Cities and Towns Week. And in observance of this event, the city of Cholo will host third graders at a tour municipal facilities to introduce the students to the workings of local government. Thank you. Present that here with our city manager tonight, the city. This time, we have a short video concerning cities, and we'll just show that, it's just a short video, and hope you get a kick out of it, because it really, in a short minute or two, shows exactly what our city crews do every day.
Have you ever thought about what goes into constructing and maintaining your city or town streets? Besides pavement and street signs, there's much more than meets the eye, and more expense than you might think. Sidewalks, landscaping, lighting. Space for parking and bike lanes are all part of what we see. But beneath the surface, there's even more that we do not see. There are water and sewer lines, storm drainage systems, and other systems. Plus the costs of maintenance, repair, and sweeping to keep streets clean and safe. Cities and towns plan, budget, build, and maintain streets and roads so you can get to school, work, and home safely every day. Learn more about how your Arizona Cities and Towns work by visiting azcitieswork.com.
You know, the storm drains work today, and that's fantastic. It's one of the great things that happens, so it's great. This time, I'll go back to Special Events. We have a presentation of our semi-annual report by the Cholo Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Applegate?
Mayor, council, thanks for having me. Appreciate it. I think you got the same packet I have. I'd like to make sure that I go in the same order, and I think you got it, I think you have a different order than I do. So this sheet first, all right? We'll do that, and then there's two horizontal ones. We'll do them next, and then we'll go into the budget that's at the end of that. So let me just kind of give you a picture of what you're looking at here. This is, you know, highlights and information all the way through TIC Visitor Center and Chamber through the quarter. And so I'll just breeze through that real quick, and stop me with any questions if you would. Highlights for the quarter, we hired a new office manager, Tammy Scott. We're excited that she's with us, she's doing great. So you have now visitor counts, monthly statistics, and information requests and referrals. And so those are the counts of people that have walked in the chamber by month to a total of the quarter, and it shows broke up by local people, in-state, out-of-state, and then foreign countries. You can see those numbers there. The next section that says monthly statistics, those are predominantly website statistics. So everything that's come off of our webpage. So homepage views for the, you know, broke up by month and then quarter, member directory hits, member page hits, and event inquiries, and then job postings across the board there. You'll see the next line down, and we've made some adjustments that you'll see on the next page, of how we read these and how we record these by quarter and by month. This is information I think is important. This is the relocation hits for inquiries on the relocation of the website, and then the difference between that and what's actually processed. What was tracked in the past was just what was processed. So just to go, let's just do the first one, relocation website inquiries. That's everybody that's clicked on the area that was interested or looked at to relocate in our area, 242 for the quarter. And then of that, how many of them actually requested to get a relocation packet, 72. If we processed it, it was requested, and those are the numbers. So the total number of processes is what was requested. Next one down is vacation websites. So whoever inquired about vacationing in the area on our website was 190 of that, the number that requested a packet, 31. And then the one below that, tourist information, that is, there's a section, websites, broken materials, basically chamber and tourist information. And so if they just clicked on tourist information, which is general and basic, then that's the 1744. And then the last line, which brings to the totals at the bottom, the last line are the, I'm sorry, no, the totals at the bottom are the packets processed, I apologize. The last line there is local businesses referred. So that was something done in previous years. We just started doing that towards the end of July and are now tracking. Every time we refer a local business in town, chamber or non-chamber member, anytime that somebody comes in and says, hey, where do I stay? Where do I eat? Where do I go get my oil changed? Where can I get new tires? Working whatever, we track that, and you're looking at the totals there by month. Of course, you'll see that number continue to go up as we're able to track that better. It was something that was done in previous years and wasn't done until we just reinstituted it after that point, so. Points of interest, earlier this month, the chamber acquired four new computers. When I landed at the Chamber of Commerce, we were, we had four or five computers. All of them were on different operating system. All of them had different Microsoft packages. Nobody could communicate with anybody, it wasn't networked properly. It's taken care of. So we're happy and excited that that is done, with all new equipment in there, and everybody's on the same page, quite literally. Up and coming events, of course, Leadership White Mountain starts the 29th of October. We've got, I think, now 24 participants to that. The city has a couple participants coming, and we're glad that they're there. And so it's a great program, kicks off the 29th. The last one there is financials, and we'll cover that last, that's an attachment. So then what we'll go to is the next page, which shows a year-to-date and comparing 2014. And you can see by quarter. You've got the exact same statistics that we went through, visitors counts, monthly statistics, and information requests, referrals, by quarter, all the way across the board, and comparing 2014 to 2015 there. So you can kind of see what was tracked last year, numbers that were in there, and where we're at. Do you guys have that?
It's sideways.
Sideways? Just look at mine, no, sorry. Yeah, I didn't know that was sideways. I don't know, I guess I'll give you an opportunity to peruse it and get your bearings straight, literally, and see if you got a question on that. Some of the things that you might have a question on would be the very bottom row, information requests. You see a lot of zeros on the 2014. Again, that goes back to what I pointed out a minute ago that showed where they did not, where we're not tracking, where inquiries were, they were just tracking packets out. I think there's a big difference between those, and wanted to make sure we started seeing those things. The next page is a monthly, is a pie chart which shows over time where the visitors are coming from. So that's an active chart, 57% are coming from in-state, 28% are coming from out-of-state, 11% are coming from, I said, are coming from local visitors in the TIC. And then the remaining number, which doesn't have a number, is 4%, which are coming from foreign countries. So that's where we're getting our visitors that come into the Cholo Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center are coming from. And then that's broke up by month, again, comparing 2014 and 2015. So you can see exactly where those are coming from, from the quarter. The last bar chart is just a comparison showing you month-by-month where they were 2014 to where it is now currently, 2015. Interesting, by the time you hit August, it matches up, because every month before that, it shows a lower visitor count, January, February, March, April, May, June, July, than in 2015 that was in 2014, and then in August, they equal out. And then in September, we passed 2014 by a little bit. So interested to see what the rest of the year is going to be. Not sure why that is, but those are the numbers as I'm reporting them. I'm just taking last year's numbers and presenting them to you. So the remaining sheets, you should be back in the real world again now with something that you can read, is that right, I hope? Okay, so it's just a P and L by class, January through September. You might remember, we met earlier this year, first quarter, and I talked to you about how we corrected, that's what I'll use a word, corrected the P and L or the way finances were done in QuickBooks, and separated Chamber of Commerce income and outgoing with TIC income and outgoing by class. Therefore, we could now see it in years past, and I've sat where you guys are sitting, I've sat on the board of the, with the chamber, other chambers, and been privy to this information really for the past six, seven years, never really been able to disseminate why is money being spent where and how. And so under the advice of a couple CPAs, we decided to separate this by class. So now you can see exactly, this is the money that's being spent in the chamber, this is the income that comes in the chamber, this is the money being spent by the TIC, and this is the money that's coming into the TIC. And so that's broke out. You've got the detailed report, so every line's there.
Jimmy, before you go any further, real quick, just, I guess the thing that I've heard the last few years is the dollar at the gate. Is that $5,000 that important?
A dollar at the gate?
Isn't that what it is, or $2?
You're talking about Cholo Days. Sorry, Vice Mayor, I had to catch up to you. Yeah, I think it is. I think it is.
You don't think that that's...
I don't think we take a hit on that, is what I'm, I would say it that way as well. I don't think that people aren't coming because of the dollar. And I think that $5,000 that comes in through that is worth it. It's a major fundraising component of the Chamber of Commerce, the Cholo Days, and that five helps.
Can I keep going here? So with that, are you telling me that 5,300 people went through the gate?
$5,300 were collected. We stopped collecting after certain times, 8 o'clock. And then you'll recall on the Friday night, when we had such great weather that day, we stopped collecting, I think, earlier than that, just because we weren't sure what the disposition of the rest of the evening was going to be. So we decided, let's just not even worry about collecting. We didn't know what we were going to have to do.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to figure is, I seen something somewhere, and I can't find it in this report yet, I'm going to stay on Cholo Days.
Go for it.
Of the people that have gone through the gate.
So 10,000 to 12,000, we've clicked, not last year, year before. We had two different numbers, and so there's a range between 10,000 and 12,000 who have walked through those gates when it was a Friday, Saturday, and a Sunday. That was one of those years. That was one of those years. Last year, you'll recall, it was a Friday and a Saturday. And what you also have to remember too, when they clicked, they're clicking everybody that walked through, not 10 and under, we didn't collect money on.
I just, I think that figure, if you're collected at the gate, should have been higher to match the count that you guys are reporting that go through there.
Weather hurtest Friday night, big time.
No, I agree with that. But it just seems like that, if we're reporting 20,000 people went through that gate, that figure should be...
Well, we're reporting 10,000 people went through that gate.
Oh, 10,000?
Yeah. And so you got to remember too, you know, a mom comes in with four kids, only mom's getting counted if all the kids are under 10.
Okay.
Right?
Well, I don't know that.
Yeah, that is, that's the case.
Okay.
So we're not collecting 10 years and under. Okay? That one dollar at the gate is for 10 years and older, or under 10, I guess, is 10 years and older. Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Are we going down that road anymore? Does anybody have any other questions on Sholo days? Happy to address them. Okay. So purpose of what you're looking at, again, and I think it's important, is that we've separated TIC and Chamber of Commerce. So you've got a way better, a truer picture of where incomes come and where it's going. And same with Chamber and TIC. So what that means to all of us is that by the end of this year, we'll be able to go just exactly where is the money for the Tourist Information Center. I know in years past, and I myself even stood here at the beginning of the year and asked for additional monies based on my projections looking forward. And I know in years past, other executive directors have stood here with their hand out, asking for more monies. But I think this way we've separated this by class, we'll be able to look at the end of the year and go, here's what we got. Here's where the rubber meets the road, and here's what we need, and here's what we don't. So I'm glad that we've done it this way. Two or three more months down the road, and we'll have a real picture. Okay?
Jimmy, what is your reimbursed wages, WIA program here?
WIA?
It's item 26...
Give me a line number.
You get reimbursed wages on both the tourist information as well as on the Sholo Chamber there, right above your total income.
26...
005. And it's right above where you have your total income of 198. There's a reimbursed wages.
Second page.
Second page, about halfway down.
Oh, okay.
Page two.
That's where I couldn't see it. Where are you at?
You have your total income, you have your gross profit.
Total income, gross profit.
Right there, the reimbursed wages, it's counting as income on both sides. And I just, you know, it's just an odd item, reimbursed wages.
Yeah.
It's the WIA program, whatever that is.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know what that is. I apologize. Okay, so that's a great question, WIA program. We hired a manager, office manager, beginning of the year through the WIA program. And with that, through that program, she was, we paid 50%, and WIA paid the other remaining 50% of her wages for six months.
Okay.
Which was, we had her for about eight months.
I see.
And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Apologize, it took me a minute to catch up to you. Yeah. So...
No, I'm glad to see that you have been able to separate the two from the Tourist Information Center. I'm going to applaud you for, this is the first time in many years that I've seen that the Tourist Information Center has actually made a little bit of money, as far as maybe nonprofit, but it did make a sale of about $3,500 there. So that's good. So that's good.
We're tracking the items that we sell through the Chamber. And even if we sell them at Sholo days, if it's a tourist information product, then we track it that way. So, yeah. Put the money where it's supposed to be. That's what makes sense. That's the crux of my presentation. If there's any questions, I can address.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? Ready? We appreciate what you do there, helping with the Chamber and lays on there.
Yeah, let me go into this a little bit more. We do work together as far as the expenses allocated to the Tourist Information Center versus the Chamber to make sure that everything is lined up. And I think Jimmy does a great job of looking out for the Chamber, managing the Chamber, and the Chamber itself, with its volunteers and everything, does a great job on the Tourist Information Center. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Great. Thank you very much, Jimmy. Appreciate it. Next item we have tonight is a presentation of the snow management plan. We have Rick Austin, Matt Armijo, and Ryan Hall. Glad to have you guys with us here this evening. I want to know what your prediction for snow is. Deep?
A lot.
Okay, deep, good.
Depends on the weather, as Bill would say.
Did you see the hail drift when we came up?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Staff would like to take the opportunity to present the 2015-2016 snow plan here to help. Here to help me with the presentation is Ryan Hall, the Street Supervisor, and Matt Armijo, the Wastewater Collection Supervisor. The city is split into 13 routes that 26 plow operators are responsible for. The main pieces of equipment include four 10-wheeled trucks, two six-wheeled trucks, three loaders with plows, and several pickup trucks for cul-de-sac and smaller rideaways. During a snow event, these two individuals beside me are responsible for coordinating removal operations upon a call-out by either myself or the police department. Snow removal are classified into four levels of response. Level one is reserved for half-inch to two inches of snow. When the snow starts to fall, Ryan, Matt, and myself will start monitoring the streets or any slick areas that may need pretreatment such as cinders or a mix of DIacer and cinders that were pre-approved by Council. Which should be up on the screen. There you go. Level two is reserved for two to three inches of snowfall. At this point, Public Works is out making sure all school bus routes, collector streets, transit routes, and city-owned parking lots remain open by a combination of light plowing or cinder spreading. Other Public Works staff at this point is being put on standby for a full call-out. Level three is reserved for three or more inches of snow. This triggers a full call-out of two 12-hour shifts that are supervised by Ryan as the A-shift coordinator and Matt the B-shift coordinator. Public Works is split between the two shifts, ah, that was my place, sorry. Public Works is split between two shifts, and snow operations continue until streets are open and passable to traffic. After the snowfall has ceased, streets will be widened, and staff will begin the snow berm removal process on the approved updated list. We spent this year contacting everybody on the snow berm removal list, and we've added some and taken some off, unfortunately. Clearing sidewalks around City Hall typically falls under the Parks and Recreation area of responsibility. Public Works follows the sidewalk list that we are putting up on the screen, or is on the screen. Man, you're good. Level four is reserved for a severe event that triggers a haul-off of snow that impedes traffic and rescue services to pre-designated dump sites. During a snow event, Glenn at the airport will be conducting brake action tests on the runway with a Beaumont AFM2 deceler meter? Hey, I got it. Or equivalent, to determine that the action needs to take place to keep the airport functional. As the need arises, additional resources and manpower may be rotated to assist in the snow removal process. This year, staff has created a policy regarding mailbox damage due to snowplow operations. Staff recognizes that the post office regularly has the resident put the mailbox in the city's right-of-way or will not deliver mail to them. This policy allows the resident to put the mailbox in the right-of-way with the proper permitting process and gives direction as to what can be installed by the citizen in our right-of-way. If damage is reported, the resident has the option to make a claim to the city, have the city replace the mailbox or fix it themselves, and submit a receipt to the city. Before a claim is paid, the city, a city representative will verify if the damage is indeed due to snowplow operations or not for other reasons like rotten post or pre-existing conditions that will be documented by the Public Works Department during pre-snow operation inspections. If it is deemed that the city is responsible for the damage reimbursement of up to $100,000 of the, or $100,000, $100, or the value of the box can be obtained by the citizen. Public Works will photograph any damages and keep a log of which will include the date, address, type of damage repaired, cost of material time, and labor for each repair. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I would appreciate it.
Councilmember Crittenen.
Would you review what is required if a, and let me lead in this by saying, we have a lot of senior citizens in town, let's say disabled people, et cetera. What is required when you plow, you plow a street, it covers a driveway, what is required to clear out that driveway if a person doesn't have the physical capabilities of doing it themselves?
We have a form that is on the internet or available at Public Works or even at Town Hall that the person fills out, and the doctor signs off on it, and their doctor signs off on it, and they're put on the list.
Okay. Very good. So they can get a form, fill it out, have their doctor sign it, and their driveways will be cleared out so they can get in and out if they don't have the capability to do it themselves.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah, just for clarification, that berm that the snowplow plowed up in front of their driveway would be cleared out, not their driveway.
Correct. We are not allowed to go on...
I know you knew that, but I mean, I don't want people to think they can fill out a form, and the city's going to clear their driveway up to the back of their car or the carport or whatever. It's just that berm that the snowplow put up there that actually would still be in the right-of-way. Am I right?
Correct. We're not allowed on private property for any reason.
And it could take a few, a day possibly, before those berms get cleared. They're not cleared immediately, are they?
Depending on the snowfall.
Right, right. Any other councilmember? No, let's hope we have a lot of snow. Let's hope that you guys are very busy. You know, we appreciate you getting things ready and being prepared and have a plan. That would be great. But, you know, I think it's great that we live in a community where we do this, and there's a lot of communities that the snow's got to get a lot deeper before they'll even think about plowing it. So I think it's one of the great things of living here in Sholo. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Got lucky, Matt.
All the snow in your driveway.
Now, can you guys talk with those ties on?
I couldn't breathe.
Our next item we have is a summary of current, you know, consideration, new business, consideration of acceptance of a gravity sewer at White Mountain Vacation. Mr. Cup.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At its regular meeting of October, or August 4th, 2015, the City Council approved the preliminary development plan for a project called Woodfield, a residential vehicle park. The plan submitted by Bruce Ironside of White Mountain Vacation Parks LLC covered approximately 14.29 acres with 174 proposed lots within the White Mountain Vacation Village project boundary. To provide sanitary sewer service to the project is necessary to tie into a private gravity sewer located in Vacation Village Road. This sewer line was installed as a part of a master plan of the master plan White Mountain Vacation Villages development. Currently, it currently serves the developed phases of the project. City code requires that a sewer line that serves more than one property, in this case White Mountain Vacation Villages and Woodfield, must be a public sewer. The owners of both developments are proposing to give the private sewer in Vacation Village Road to the city. This would include dedicating 16-foot wide easement along the sewer alignment. Staff inspected the sewer line and manholes and found them to be in good condition. There are repairs that staff requires, including the recoating of five manholes and repairing one offset in the pipe. A list of requirements was provided to the owner, and by the owner, in this case, I mean White Mountain Vacation Villages. And they have requested the city allow an assurance to be posted for the work. The owner provided a cost estimate for the improvements, and the assurance amount is 120% of this estimated cost. This is the same process that the city has used for early subdivision acceptance. Staff recommends accepting the gravity sewer line, infrastructure, and easement in the Vacation Village Road, and to hold the assurance as guarantee of completion of the needed repairs contingent on receiving the recorded easement.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer questions as well.
Any questions by staff or to staff? Councilmember Alsop.
I got a question. Maybe staff or Ed can even clarify it. This liner stuff that you wanted to put in there, didn't we, didn't we have a sewer project here that we didn't want to put that liner stuff in, or it was causing some issues? Is that, is that going to be the same type of stuff, or what are we looking at?
We actually have a liner product that we have been using for the last year or so. It's worked out very well, and they specified this same liner treatment. It's different than the, I can't remember what that product was called, but it's a different product. These manholes actually had another type of coating in there, and that coating is starting to come off. And that's why we asked them to go back and recoat those. The reason we need the liner is because it's downstream of a large lift station, and that type of effluent is really hard on manholes. And so we took a look at them, and that lining really needed to be replaced. We're using a new product or a newer product in process for that.
Because wasn't the newer manholes that we put in, was a different type of material that we didn't have to use any coating or something on?
That's right. And if these were new manholes downstream of a force main, we would probably require the material to be the new material that you're talking about. That's the...
The urethane or something.
Kane was here, I can't tell you what that's called. But it's a polymer concrete is what it is. But that would mean replacing those manholes altogether, and I don't think we need to go that far with this.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah. Does it seem a little strange to have the owner provide the cost estimate and us take 120% of that and feel comfortable?
Well, actually, they did provide the cost estimate. However, the cost estimate for the manhole coating were the city's numbers, because we had just bid some of this work a few weeks prior. So we provided those numbers for the manhole coatings. And then I did review, you reviewed the $4,500 for fixing an offset, and that's, I think that's a reasonable number.
Okay. Just curious. Councilwoman Kukavas?
Bruce is going to kill me for saying this, but is 16-foot wide easement standard? Or is that plenty of room for crews to get in there?
And that's our standard sewer easement width.
Any other questions? Councilmember?
I got one more question. With everything you inspect and everything else, there's no clay pipes or anything else? Everything is up to standard for all that stuff? So we don't have to go in and try to change anything out right away or anything else like that?
No, it's all plastic pipe. And we actually ran our TV camera down there as part of the inspection. So we've looked inside of the pipes and inside of the manholes.
And no, nothing's been turned in about anything collapsing or blockages or anything else in the last two or three years that's been in there, so?
Well, I'm assuming not, that, since that was a private sewer, we really haven't looked at that. But we would have been able to detect that when we TV'd it if there were any issues. And we did find that one offset that needs fixed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Crittenen.
Are, from a legal viewpoint, are the people that are approving this from Vacation Village, is this going to carry on for infinity as far as having a correct easement?
Are you talking about the easement itself that they're giving to us?
Yes.
Yes. It'll be the city's easement forever.
Okay.
Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. I brought up another, just a thought. Now, since this is, this is adopted in the Sholo, in the Sholo city limits, isn't it? So we don't have to worry about any extra sewer usage or anything else like that, cost or anything. Okay, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.[1779.62] Councilwoman Kukavas.
I move to accept the gravity sewer infrastructure and easement at White Mountain Vacation Village and hold the assurance as guarantee of the needed repairs contingent upon receipt of the recorded easement.
I have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Crittenen. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor. Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Cup. Our next item is, uh, consideration of appointment of Board of Adjustments member, Ms. Kurosaki.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this year, Frank Armando, who was a member of the Board of Adjustment, passed away, um, and he had an unexpired term, which ends August 2016. As, um, we were directed by the council, we advertised a vacancy but received no applications by the deadline. And since that time, staff has talked to a number of individuals to gauge their interest in serving. Um, and out of all the people they talked to, one resident, John Jarrett, expressed interest, and he did complete an application. He is a retired city employee who worked for the police department. Um, and so some of you may, may know him. Although you have not interviewed, the council has not interviewed Mr. Jarrett, we are suggesting his appointment since no other individuals have come forward. But you may, you will see that there are two motions. Um, you may either appoint him, or if you choose to interview him, you just need to state when you'd like to do that, a date and time should be included in the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Vice Mayor?
No discussion. I move to appoint John Jarrett to the Sholo Board of Adjustments for the term ending August 2016.
Okay, we have a, a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Alsop. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor. Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. This time we have a summary of current events. Look to council members to, Vice Mayor.
Um, just to let everybody know, I'm sure the city manager will touch on it, but the trunk or tree is coming up. Probably could be a little cold, so be safe out there, and uh, please support, um, Bilby's Interior Second Annual Haunted House. 100% of the proceeds that he gets through the walk in the, through the door, he donates back into the community. So, I know he's excited about it this year. He's bought a lot more scary stuff. So, uh, I think his hours are a little different than the trunk or tree. I believe they're from 4:00 to 10:00. I think trunk retreat's from noon to 8:00 or something like, something like that.
It starts Friday night, too.
His is Friday and Saturday.
And Saturday.
Yeah. So, anyway, come out and support that. Like I said, all the proceeds go out to a local charity. Thank you.
That's right, thank you. Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. Attended a meeting with Meals on Wheels, and, uh, they're getting ready for their holiday, uh, servings. Um, they're gonna be doing a Thanksgiving lunch, um, and within the next couple of weeks of, of Thanksgiving, before Thanksgiving.
It's on Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving.
And, um, uh, we're gonna be serving, uh, different Thanksgiving meals there, uh, ham and turkey and everything. But everything is, uh, has all been donated and everything, so these are gonna be free meals, and we're looking, you know, anybody that would like to come and, and have a free warm meal that, that afternoon is welcome to come. Just call the Meals on Wheels and, and set up a, uh, put your name on a list and when you can get served and stuff like that. But this is gonna be a free meal, and, uh, a lot of people from Frontier is gonna be serving at that. And the second thing is, I went to Derby Down to Deuce board meeting. Uh, we're working on, uh, different things for the Sholo Days, for the Derby Down to Deuce. We're looking at more cars. We're also looking for a national sponsor. Uh, we're trying to make this thing, uh, a lot bigger than what it is now and, and a lot more fun. We're, we're looking at, uh, having a PA system going down the whole road there where people can understand and see what's going on and be like a, a little introduction of who's racing and who's in first, second, and third, and try to give everybody a, a, a different perspective of the Derby Down to Deuce. So, hopefully, we'll have all that, uh, put together before the, uh, next races. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Councilmember Kelly?
Yes. Um, later on, we're gonna recognize here, I believe, that, uh, City Council's having a retreat for planning and all that. Lots of open discussion on the 29th at, starting at noon, and that's at the County Complex Building, is it?
City Hall.
At the what?
City Hall. City Hall.
Over at City Hall. So, please, public, be advised, you're welcome. Uh, you might say it's boring, and you might not, but anyway, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other report?
I don't have a-
Report, I just want to welcome, uh, Councilmember Hatch back with us, following his surgery. I'm glad that he's kicking good, so that's great. Appreciate it.
I'd make a comment, too. I'd be remiss if I didn't congratulate the staffed administration and the doctors associated with the Summit Hospital. They did a wonderful job with me. I would highly recommend spending your medical dollars on the mountain.
That's great. That's great. Time to time the city manager.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, we're, we're completing some Public Works projects around the city. Sholo Heights has a couple more weeks, um, to complete that project. Fairway Park water lines, they're in the final process of that. So, as usual, we appreciate the patience of the public on those two projects. Another thing I would report is we have a number of events scheduled before the end of October. Let me just go through those events. A free, free movie in the park will be this Friday, October 23rd. It'll feature a PG-rated Disney film, Into the Woods, at 7:00 PM at the Pandrosa Field in the city park, and that's this Friday, October 23rd. That'll be in competition to Sholo Cougars hosting the Snowflake Globos and a football game at the same time. There's an underwater pumpkin hunt for teens age 12 to 17 on Wednesday, October 28th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Family Aquatic Center. There's a Halloween-themed dance and carnival, especially for teens age 13 to 18, on Friday, October 30th, from 7:00 to 9:30 PM at City Campus Gym. There'll be a three-mile Monster Dash Fun Run on Saturday, October 31st, at 9:00 AM at Festival Marketplace, and that's put on by the Sholo Main Street Group. And then, as has been mentioned, the annual Spooktacular Festival on Saturday, October 31st, from noon to 8:00 PM on Cooley and Ninth Streets. More, we have all these items, these events listed on our website, sholoz.gov for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other scheduling of meetings that's not currently scheduled?
Well, we've mentioned the retreat, October 29th. That starts at noon at City Hall. And then, we also have a joint meeting with the Pine Top Lakeside City or Town Council on Thursday, November 19th, 6:00 PM at Sholo City Hall. So, if you could mark your calendars on that November 19th meeting.
See, uh, no other business, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Motion by Vice Mayor, second by Councilmember Hatch, all those in favor. Any opposed? See that that pass, and this time I adjourn this meeting.